Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, November 15th, 2023. Let the record show all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Schwaiger and Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. I will call to order Add and Deletes Consent Agenda Number 15, Add Department and Committee Reports Number 1B. Did I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to Approval of the Minutes. Approval of the Minutes, Hibbing City Council Meeting of November 1st, 2023. Wishes of the Council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approval of Minutes, Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of November 1st, 2023. Wishes of the Council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll move on to a public hearing regarding Special Assessment for Sidewalk Replacement. We're offering Resolution Number 23-11-08, authorizing special assessments for the sidewalk replacement.
Mayor, so then you'd call for a public hearing if anyone wants to address that issue at this time?
Very good. So we will open it up to a public hearing that anybody would want to address the resolution regarding Special Assessments for Sidewalk Replacement.
Second call?
Yep. Anybody else interested in talking about our Special Assessments for Sidewalk? Third time, anybody interested in a Special Assessment for Sidewalk? Hearing none, we'll move on to Approval of the Council. Wishes of the Council.
Motion to support.
Support by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll move on to, again, a public hearing regarding Special Assessment for Long Grass, Utilities and/or Garbage and Stormwater. Anybody wish to respond or speak to the public hearing assessment for Long Grass Utilities? Is anybody interested in speaking to the assessment for Long Grass and Utilities? For third time, is anybody interested in speaking to Special Assessments for Long Grass and Utilities? Yes.
I'm just curious. I just want to know. I had gotten a past due notice for a sewer and garbage assessment, and I'm just wondering when that was done by the city. I never got an invoice. I never got a statement. I never got anything stating it was going to happen. And then when I did get the final notice, it was to the original homeowner because I just bought his home. And it was sent to a P.O. box, never sent to me. So I didn't even get a chance to pay this, and I got sent a final notice. So I'm just curious how that would be responsibility on my behalf. That's me paying a bill. I have no idea what I'm paying. I have nothing in front of me that shows that that was done on behalf of my property or for my property.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, Sheena, I'm going to turn to you because you deal with PUC and our process in dealing with this issue.
So everybody's scenario is a little bit different because it depends on when you purchase the property. Some people, it's a landlord-tenant relationship. So I guess what my recommendation would be is if you could just give me your information, like your name and phone number, my department would give you a call tomorrow and we can look up your utility account and/or the one before you and let you know kind of when it was incurred in the different scenario behind that.
Okay, because I was proactive when I did get the past due notice, and I did call the number that was on the bottom of the paper. And the gentleman I spoke to at that time told me that just to hang tight, wait until November 1, because the letter was sent out to the other homeowner as well, previous homeowner, and we'll see which one pays first. I don't, yeah, because I just bought the home just a little over a year ago, so.
And we did send it out. If there was an account owner, we sent it to them because it was their utilities. But because it's an assessment, we made sure any property owner who would be getting the special assessment was also made known of that balance. So he probably was saying that just to say, kind of, you know, to basically say that that person may still pay the bill.
Okay, so my understanding is then that you're going to look at when I purchased the home and property to when this assessment was done to see if I'm liable for said bill or if it's previous owner?
Right.
Or is it solely going to be my responsibility because I am said property owner?
Right. I guess my recommendation would be just because I haven't seen your account would just be to give me that information and then I will look into tomorrow just based off of, like, when the utilities were incurred and when the property changed hands and all that information.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Anybody else would like to speak? Very good. So if there is an issue, reach out to our finance office and they will look into it for you. Thank you for coming forward. Hearing no other, wishes of the Council.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Number 1, approve the towns payable dated 11/9/2023 checks number 175929 through 176019 in amount of $594,443.06. Also, 11/15/2023 checks 176020 through 176039 in amount of $746,188.11. Wishes of the Council. Oh, I'm sorry. I got through the whole consent. I'm sorry. Approve the city payroll for pay period ending 10/22/2023 for the employee sick leave in the amount of $142,269.08. 11/3/2023 checks 168842 through 168849 in amount of $531,542.52. 3, accept and place on file the Hibbing Police Department Activity Report for October 2023. 4, authorize the posting of temporary full-time library technician. 5, authorize the hire of Brittany Kuchak for the temporary library aide pending pre-employment contingencies. Number 6, approve the new sick leave policy effective January 1st, 2024. 7, approve the hire of Sean Nicola for the full-time battalion chief, fire marshal, paramedic, effective January 1st, 2024. 8, authorize the hire of Charlie Graham for the full-time equipment operator 1 with the Public Works Department, effective November 16th, 2023. 9, approve the eliminating of 1 full-time skilled labor position in a Public Works Department. 10, authorize the creation and posting of a full-time equipment operator 1 for the Public Works Department. 11, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Fire Department Recognition Dinner on Saturday, December 9th, 2023 at the Do U. 12, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to the Highway Safety Improvement Program Funding Application for the Highway 5 and Townlight Road Intersection Safety Improvement Project. 13, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Council with Truth and Taxation starting at 6:00 p.m. 14, set the next City Council Workshop for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. 15, set the Special City Council Meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Items previously approved, set the public hearing for the adoption of a final levy on Wednesday, December 6th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. in a City Hall Council Chamber. Wishes of the Council.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as read and published. Consent Agenda.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Before we move on to age-friendly presentation by Georgia Lane, I would just like to welcome Kelly Grinsteiner to her first meeting as a part of our marketing and communication manager for the city of Hibbing. Welcome, Kelly. At this time, I'd like to welcome Georgia Lane. The mic is yours.
Thank you, and I'm seeing that my computer's about ready. So there's a way for somebody to help me plug this in, is there? Great. Thanks. Really happy to be here tonight. My name is Georgia Lane. I'm with the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging, a division of the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. I believe I was here about a year ago along with a friend of mine, Anne Buzzy, to talk to the council about aging and just provide you all with some updates on some work that's been happening. So if I can get my slide presentation on for council members to see. Great, thank you. So you all have a sheet in front of you that talks about aging facts, and I think some of this, you may have heard some of it before, but just wanting to share, to set the stage. We now have more people 65 and older than we do children 18 and under. And of that, 93% of people live in the community, not in nursing homes or assisted livings. And 21% of those receive supports and services. So when we look at the aging landscape, we can really see that most people 65 and older live in their homes and in their communities. And these folks are community assets to our communities. I've pulled some data on the Hibbing community profiles. You can see that we have 1 in 3 people are 60 and older. So that's a fairly large demographic. And so our ask tonight is to think about how the city can support some efforts that are helping Hibbing become more age-friendly. So in age-friendly community, what I'm here talking about tonight is a World Health Organization network that is supported by AARP nationally and Age Friendly Minnesota statewide. But when you think about age-friendly, it's really good for all ages. It allows people of every life stage and every age to thrive. It helps foster economic growth, economic growth, and makes for happier, healthier residents. And some more information on there. I'll speak a tiny bit to the economic benefit of older adults. We often think about aging in terms of folks needing supports and services and what's that going to cost us. But the reality is that the 50-plus population accounts for 36% of Minnesota's population, but contribute a higher proportion of GDP. So the amount of wealth and benefit that older adults provide to their communities is really important. And so there's a whole host of information about the longevity and economy and economic benefits. What our ask is for tonight, over the summer, I've had the pleasure of being involved with a lot of community conversations, including a meeting with Mayor Heiduk, City Administrator Greg, as well as Nick Arora with Parks and Rec, just sharing information on this and really seeing some community interest. We've seen great leadership from the library through a variety of initiatives they have going on, as well as from local health systems, community members. We actually just had a great meeting last week where folks were talking about, yes, we want to take on this designation. We want Hibbing to get credit for what's already happening and how can we work in tandem with the city of Hibbing to make this happen? So there, it's a five-year process. But you guys are really in the pre-planning phase to determine, does this make sense? What's in it for us? How can this help us achieve what we're already working to achieve? And the ask is that Hibbing prioritizes aging as a strategic priority and that all planning things that involve housing, transportation, talking about sidewalks, those are all age-friendly initiatives, even though you might not think about it with that lens. The age-friendly process is structured under 8 domains of livability, including disaster preparedness. So communities that take this on, go through a community needs assessment and then develop action plans. What this process does is it allows people from different sectors, different organizations to collaborate and not duplicate. It's an umbrella that helps communities organize themselves and helps communities to, excuse me, go farther than what they could have. We're very lucky that in Minnesota, we have about $3.9 million that was, or sorry, $2.9 million that was allocated to age-friendly grants. We currently, in our region, in the Seven County Arrowhead, have about 15 grants that have come into us, to our region, to support age-friendly projects. And so all that to say that when you have this designation and an age-friendly coalition, that it can really open up the doors to bring funding in. So nuts and bolts, what are the steps? Really, kind of in this pre-planning phase and breaking this down. Number 1, we are just educating people about what this means. What's the concept? Why should we do it? And then what makes sense for Hibbing? Because it does have to be a community-led solution. And step 2 is to determine who might facilitate or co-facilitate an age-friendly coalition that could be comprised of city officials or community members. Step 3 is to determine what additional funding or resources might be needed. And as I mentioned, there are external funding sources that Hibbing could apply for. And then step 4, entering the AARP network and following their process for step 5. So I've been blown away just in my conversations and it's been super fun getting to know folks in Hibbing because there's so much going on and so many assets to build from. You know, we have the, we talked with Betsy Olivanti about the housing study. So that's really great work and exciting to hear about. Our conversation with Parks and Rec and with the city administrator, Mayor Heiduk. There's interest here, right? I think that there's definite interest. And a lot of great things that are happening. Can talk about chambers of commerce in terms of how is this an economic opportunity for businesses? And more. So there's a lot of community assets that are going here and we're trying to leverage them to think about how we could pull together an age-friendly coalition. So potential outcomes. You'll see actually a picture here. For those of you who don't recall, a couple of years ago, the city of Hibbing did receive an Aging Impact Award for Parks and Rec, who kept the trails clear of snow during the winter during the pandemic and installed benches and porta-potties so it was more accessible. So that's a great example of how Hibbing has already taken steps. It's not just good for older adults, it's good for people of all ages. So potential outcomes in addition, you know, you're increasing conversations and collaboration among organizations to avoid duplication. You want to retain and attract modern elders in your community. This is a place where we want people to come to retire. We want people to stay here. And giving it a name and giving some recognition around it really allows more work to happen. My friend Anne and I did a deep dive with the city of Princeton because there are about 17 communities in Minnesota that are in this AARP network. And Princeton was probably most parallel to Hibbing. They joined in 2020 and it's co-convened by a community volunteer who happens to be a retired RN and their city administrator. They've got representation from all over the community, which I think could really parallel to what's happening in Hibbing. And then their city serves as their fiscal agent. This was an interesting fact. They started with a $100 donation from their local liquor store, and it's grown from there. They've received additional dollars coming in to support transportation, as well as social connection and things like that. So they have a fairly great action plan. But I think there's other models that are out there, so you're not reinventing the wheel. And last question, or last slide for me is for the folks of Hibbing to consider, you know, how will this help you? This has to be a community-led initiative. How will it help you establish or achieve established goals? Get credit for the great work that's already happening, avoiding duplication and bringing people together? And then what does it take in terms of financial resources, staff time and expertise? And how will it help do what you already want to do? One example was the Hibbing Housing Study, so incorporating an age-friendly lens to that. And maybe that's already being done, but we're giving a name for it and giving a little bit more credibility. How will it help boost economic development and then recruit and retain people in your community? And so I'm always happy to talk to anybody more at length for this, but I would like to hand it over to my friend Anne. And she is a recent recipient, oh, it got cut off in my slide there, of the Rural Healthcare Heroes. My inbox is blowing up today. Pictures of Anne Buzzy are coming from the Department of Health, from everywhere. But she is a great advocate for aging and knows a lot about her stuff. So I'm going to ask Anne to just say a few words about why this works for her.
Oh, didn't expect that. Makes me teary-eyed. You have an Aging in Minnesota fact sheet, and what I want to emphasize on that is that Greater Minnesota, the area outside the Twin Cities, is home to a larger share of people over 65. And the second thing is that there's more aging women than men. So there's 25% more at age 65, and by 85 years, you know, there is 78% more women. So when we really look at aging in Minnesota, we're really talking about women, women living alone, and therefore they've lost their husband's social security check. So they're often living alone in poverty. What I have for you is a number of quotes from women in Hibbing. The first one, it's about personal agency. People closest to us want to take away our freedoms. This was a discussion with a group of ladies, and they say their children who live in the cities are trying to recruit their moms to come and live with him or get an apartment down in the cities. And what they are saying, we are citizens of Hibbing, we own our homes, we pay taxes, we shop in Hibbing for our goods and services. Our friends are here. We regularly attend our fitness program at Grace Lutheran Church and have made many new friends. Housework and yard work keep us in shape. We are safe. It is also about our aging approach. Programs and classes that are offered for us treat us like patients, like there is something wrong with us, often scaring us so we start being overly cautious and afraid to live a normal life here. Aging for us too is about protecting us. My kids asked me to move to a little house with no steps. So this could be one of your moms. I am in my 90s. I moved to a place with no stairs. But when I visited my children, it became harder and harder to navigate the stairs to get into their house. If you don't do steps, you can't do steps. So she joined our fitness program at Grace Lutheran Church, and now she can do steps again. It is about belonging in our communities. It is so disappointing that there are few to no scheduled activities for us during day hours. All our community activities are scheduled after 4:30 p.m. It is about our rural environment, our town environment. Parking and access to our old buildings is difficult, especially in the winter months and in the dark. And of course, this is women, so they do have a comment about their spouses. Our guys have coffee with friends every day, then come home and watch TV. Death by sitting. How do we engage our men to age well? And we talked about funerals. A bunch of funeral ladies are saying that they're too expensive now and more deaths because of COVID are held elsewhere and not in churches anymore. And as funeral ladies, they refuse to attend a memorial in a bar. So all of us church ladies are really old now and there are no new volunteers. So who will be around to help us with our funerals? And lastly, it's about perspective. I don't know if you know Norma Femright. She's in her 90s. She says, "Oh, you guys are all just kids. Why do you know about aging?" So I thank you for the opportunity to share our comments with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions we can answer?
You just mentioned earlier, Georgia, that there's a timeframe, generally from seption to where your full functional group. And was that, you said, four years roughly?
It's a five-year timeframe. So there are other opportunities to form an age-friendly coalition and do that work without actually officially entering the AARP network. For instance, I should have mentioned Virginia just is creating a Citizens Advisory Group, which is comprised of their library, a community member in Parks and Rec, and then also working some on a housing coalition.
Do they work out of a location, like do they have an office or place? So just they would meet there if they had the meetings?
Right. Library is where we met, you know, wherever community spaces are available. Pretty informal.
Elsewhere?
Good. You know, both you and Anne, you know, we've known each other for a while now, so. I really do appreciate what you're doing, and it is something when we met at the Memorial Building last time. And I thought we had a great discussion. And I know we really didn't move as forward with much at that point because we've been dealing with budgets and everything else. But I am glad that you're here again tonight because it is them. And as you mentioned, our aged community right now. But we have both. You know, we have, just today, I was at the Senior Tourist Center and there was a group of about 20 senior women that I engaged with and really enjoyed it. So I agree, we need more in our community.
Yeah, I think as a citizen and have been involved with age-friendly for a while, this is a wonderful opportunity to grant. It's about funding. It's about funding. So if it's stuff we're going to do anyway, it's what kind of face you put on it. But by doing it, it changes our culture a bit too.
Yep.
Thank you.
What I would suggest is we bring this to a working session to see how we might want to move forward. And of course, we can't make a decision tonight. But your presentation and the information packet that you gave with it is very complete. So it gives a great understanding of the needs within not only our community but throughout the state.
Great. Thanks. And we've got a few other folks here who have been involved in conversations from the community and just in support of it. And so we do envision having additional kind of community, either one-on-one sessions, just that engagement. So I invite any city council members or whoever would like to attend part of those conversations. We're just folks, you know, talking about what makes sense for Hibbing and what works in Hibbing is going to be different from other communities.
And you can tell.
That's actually what's going to be my question is where can we go engage with you on a personal level and just find out, like, when are we going to, when are you going to have those discussions?
Still in the planning process. No, we have one scheduled for January 11th, which is kind of our next formal one. But in the interim, we're kind of open to just one-on-ones, having a cup of coffee. I work statewide with other age-friendly initiatives. So while I can kind of be that high-level ideas person, the nuts and bolts and nitty-gritty has to happen here by community members. And so, you know, I am, and then my, yeah, Anne lives in Sidewalk, so she's your go-to person. So I'd say reach out to me or to Anne, and then we might field it to any one of our lovely community advocates who've been involved in these conversations as well. So our line is that all roads lead to aging. We are all aging. It's not something that just happens one day. You wake up and you're old. So there's a lot of stuff we like to talk about. Thanks.
Definitely, we're going to have to create partnerships to achieve what we want to achieve. And, you know, with who's here today, you know, we've got a great core people to start moving forward.
Wonderful. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to Department and Committee Reports. Community Economic Development Director, Ms. Olivanti.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, my first item is to authorize, is to request the authorization of the signing of the Right of Access Agreement for the Hibbing HRA to conduct preliminary geological testing on parcel 14000100112 with a vendor of their choice. This is part of the city's 2023 Strategic Plan Core Strategy, well-rounded, strong quality. Plan Core Strategy, well-rounded, strong quality of life, quality housing stock that is affordable and accessible. When the Hibbing HRA Executive Director Jackie Prescott, who is here in the chambers with us tonight, presented her 2024 levy request, she indicated that she was working to apply for funding to redevelop the Greenhaven site. Towards that end, Hibbing HRA and community development staff have reviewed a number of potential land parcels for this development. In September, City Council granted the HRA access to a parcel for that initial assessment. That assessment showed that additional work would be needed to get done to submit the property ready for a housing development. Thus, additional parcels were reviewed and a subsequent property has been chosen for additional assessment. This request is to allow the HRA of Hibbing to access that parcel to determine if this one is suitable for that development. So the request tonight is to approve signing of that agreement.
Hearing what Ms. Olavanti had to say regarding this parcel, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next item then that I have is to offer resolution number twenty-three eleven ten approving the interfund loan to Hibbing Economic Development Authority for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide loan funds for the Red Rock Hotel project. This is part of the 2023 city strategic plan, high priority goal number two, to implement a plan and program to revitalize Howard Street. In August of 2021, Sean Badnaku of Midwest Partners LLC purchased the Hibbing Park Hotel property after months of researching northern Minnesota towns in search of the right fit for a long-term investment in a rural community. Renamed as Hibbing Red Rock Hotel and Suites, the property is located at fourteen oh two East Howard Street, Hibbing, Minnesota. When finished, the seventy thousand square foot hotel will boast ninety-two fully remodeled rooms, including executive suites, ample parking space, breakfast area, updated pool area, restaurant, bar, and more. The city of Hibbing has partnered with Mr. Badnaku and the IRRR in 2022 on a demolition grant for one hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, we partnered with him in the fall of 2023 for a second demolition grant for a hundred thousand dollars. Now, Mr. Badnaku is looking to get some additional financing to get this project over the finish line. This request will allow him to do the initial fifty-four rooms in the main hotel proper and get and continue working on the remaining thirty-six rooms after that. So the request tonight is to approve the interfund loan resolution to allocate two hundred and fifty thousand from the unassigned fund balance in the general fund to lend to the Hibbing Economic Development Authority to provide a loan of the same amount to Prime Properties LLC for the continued renovation of the Red Rock Hotel to complete phase one and opened up the fifty-four new hotel rooms in the city of Hibbing.
Hearing what Ms. Olavanti had to say regarding a resolution for an interfund loan, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
When we spoke to Mr. Verda, the bond counsel, with respect to this resolution, it should be contingent upon HEDA approving repaying the council, the general fund, as one of the, just as a contingency that should be built into the resolution. You don't have a draft yet. I've drafted the resolution, just hasn't gotten for you. It'll be for presentation signature tomorrow if you execute, approve this tonight.
Okay.
But that contingency he noted should be reflected in your resolution. Yes.
Counselor Fossil?
Yes.
So we could add that to our amendment? Counselor Hildebrand, you still support that?
Support.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Finance Director Mauler and myself have also worked with City Attorney Mr. Borland on this. A couple of items to note, that Sheena has devised a plan as to how the EDA, by collecting the receipts of this loan submittal for the payment from Mr. Badnaku, will send it back to the city designated fund. So I'd like to have her talk about how she plans to word that.
The unassigned fund balance from the general fund, we would transfer the loan. So there'd be the interfund loan due to the general fund from the revolving loan fund of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then I suggested that the terms be the same as the loan to the Red Rock Hotel and that the three percent interest that would be part of the loan agreement would be also paid back to the general fund on the money.
Okay.
And that it would be done annually at the end of the year. Every year we would pay back whatever was received in principal and interest.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Question?
Any other, yes.
Target date for these fifty-four rooms to be open and?
He is saying spring of 2024.
Spring of 2024. And that'll be fifty-four rooms and there's thirty-six left to go after that?
Correct. And the thirty-six are the ones in that additional upper level.
That you can drive under?
Yes, that were up the stairs outside of the restaurant, you know, the former restaurant upstairs there. This would include, like I said, that breakfast area and things. So there would still be amenities available in the hotel proper that would be completed with this phase. And our hotel study, the write-up that I gave to the EDA talks about the dire need for hotel rooms in the city of Hibbing and the Iron Range in general. And as the mayor and city administrator Przynski and I go out into the community working with our businesses, I hear that over and over again. So that is still echoed by, by folks in the area.
Absolutely. We do need more room. So yeah, thank you.
Quick question to follow that one up. So besides the fifty-four rooms in this phase one, does that also, you said, include the breakfast nook, the pool area, the workout room, and the additional meeting rooms? Is that kind of what else would be included in that?
Yes, as much of that hotel proper as he can get done. The one thing that he doesn't know is if the very large conference room would be done, but the smaller meeting rooms right next to the hotel area and some of those would be complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the small and the medium would be complete. The small was, is in the front portion of the hotel now and medium is across the pool. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Excellent. Thank you.
We move on to Finance Director Sheena Mauler.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight I'm offering resolution number twenty-three dash eleven dash oh three to make declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures from an issue, from an issue of tax-exempt bonds. If the city chooses to reimburse an expenditure with tax-exempt bonds, this resolution is required to be approved within sixty days of the expenditure. This would allow us to issue tax-exempt debt for, tax-exempt debt for two dump trucks, the buyout of one grader at the end of the lease, and an ambulance as, as has been requested in the 2024 budget. The total amount of the project in the resolution would not exceed one million and ten thousand dollars. I'm asking for city council to approve the resolution.
Hearing what Treasurer Sheena Mauler had to say, Finance Director, resolution regarding bond, bonds?
Make the motion to approve.
Make a motion by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? So basically, it's equipment bond is what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
What was the total again, one?
This is one million, ten thousand. This is the third resolution that we've done like this with the supply chain issues we've been experiencing so that if we have any capital outlay, we can reimburse with that. I'm looking after this resolution towards placing the debt soon.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
We move on to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council, back in 2019, the city entered into agreement with St. Louis County to have Wilpin Trail upgraded by the county and then have Wilpin Trail turned back over to the city. The upgrades were completed in 2020. Everything is good. They closed one of the railroad track crossings. We built a turnaround by the tracks. They upgraded the gravel on the road. It's a half-mile section that we would be taking over. And prior to this, the county and the city, we did think that we owned the entire thing, but we actually didn't. So we have been maintaining it and plowing it for many years. So I'm asking council to approve resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash oh four, revoking County Road sixty-three, and then reverting the jurisdiction back over to the city.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Laura Koneman, Lightbury Manager. Evening, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I come before you this evening to request acceptance. I offer the resolution number twenty-three eleven oh five, accepting the grant award in support of the Hibbing Public Library's 2023-2024 Winter Reading Program for the Hibbing Foundation's Family of Funds on behalf of the Owens-Pesavento Dr. Benjamin P. Owens Family Foundation in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Koneman had to say, wishes of the council?
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Is it twenty-four hundred or twenty-five hundred? It says twenty-four in the packet.
It is twenty-five hundred dollars. On mine, it says twenty-five.
Okay.
Oh, there are two of them. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you for asking.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
City Service Director, Mr. Roy.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Tonight, I look for your approval for a professional services agreement with ICS to move forward with improvements of the City Hall building. So based on our last city council working session, we, we beat this topic up pretty good and went through the numbers and, and our priority on this building is to get, get it watertight at the, at the roof, at the, the problem areas. So this would, would move that process forward and begin design on that. We would be looking at, like we talked about, the terracotta replacement, the brickwork, the tuck pointing of the worst areas from windows up. We would be doing a complete roof replacement and also air handler units at the same time. We would also look to replace the clock on the clock tower and then do clock tower repairs on the, the rotting wood and, and beisha and things up on the, on the clock tower. We would also do the windows while we're up there on the clock tower since we're doing it. And then we also have some money in there for recommissioning of our, of our existing controls and stuff for HVAC. And then including in that would be foreground units, AC units as well. So for a total of one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand and seven hundred dollars. Sheena, please step in whenever you'd like on the budget impact and where the money's coming from. But we have discussed, this year we allocated four hundred thousand to this building. We've only used a handful of it, about fifty thousand worth. So we're sitting pretty good for this year. We would carry that over to cover a portion of this project. We also have money from 2022 capital for this building that wasn't, that wasn't used. So we would also roll that in. We are going after grants. We're going to chase after any grant we can. We're currently in the process of a Minnesota Historical Society grant. We're looking at two hundred thousand there potentially, if awarded any. And the final fund would, would come from any undesigned, the undesigned fund balance to, to cover any overages that we, that we can fund with grants and the other, other ways. So open to, to questions if there are any.
Hearing what Mr. Roy had to say, first wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Nick, I like, we're doing the envelope. And just so people know, I mean, even when I was at the tourist center, that was, I said, questions for me, for the city. That was number one question.
Yep.
What's happening with City Hall?
Yep.
And, and so it means a lot. You know, it's close to the heart of many people in this community, this building. So it, it's good. I think we're making the right decision moving forward here if we get the votes that we need. But where are we at with, you know, we've, we've addressed many, many buildings. This is just one part of, you know, how are we moving, how are we going to be moving forward addressing the others? Right now, we're, we're working with ICS and Architectural.
DSGW would be the architect.
On the work that we're doing here.
Correct.
Yeah.
They would be the architect of record for this project.
So what is our plan moving forward? I guess that's the question I ask. Could it be?
With the other buildings?
Yeah, I feel it should be opened up to be, I mean, we, the assessment was hired. I have no problem with what we're doing with City Hall right now, but I want to make sure that we have an open plate for people to take a look at the project. I guess. Mr. Administrator Greg, your thoughts?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Yeah, remember, we started this whole process, three buildings, City Hall, library, Memorial Building. We went through a robust process. I think we had seven or eight contractors or consultants that, that were interested in, in doing the work. We selected ICS. The agreement, agreement that we have with them is maybe a little bit more open-ended than, than I would prefer. My thought is that we go ahead and move forward with the design of the project here at City Hall. And we use ICS to do that work and DSGAW and some of their other partners. But we also make the agreement with that consulting firm contingent upon a release of claims. So if you remember back when we signed the agreement with ICS, there was something to the effect of, and the city promises to go ahead and every time we do a project with City Hall or Memorial Building or the library, that's who we use as our construction manager. So that's what I mean by it being open-ended. Not everybody was here at that time. It's also been probably eighteen months since we signed that agreement. So I just wanted to kind of remind us of what we had committed ourselves to. But in my opinion, this project, the design, the oversight, the construction of it, I think would fulfill our obligation to that company. I think it would be the best if we had some sort of release of that effect. I did engage with legal on that and Mr. Borland, maybe I'll turn it over to you for maybe the little nuanced conversation about what that would look like.
City Minister, Mayor, members of the council. So essentially, your motion, if you want to go ahead with ICS, would include a contingency to say that our obligations under any previous agreement come to a halt with respect to that. Doesn't mean that we won't use ICS in the future, but we wouldn't be obligated to use ICS with regard to any other prospective work, regard to any of the buildings in Hibbing, including additional work on this building and/or City Hall or, excuse me, the Memorial Building or the library or any other building. So you'd build that into a letter to them to say, we approved a contention on this. You want this job, you need to agree to that.
So that would have been amendment?
Just to make sure that that's built into your motion.
Counselor Bayless?
Yeah, what Andy said.
All right. Any other discussion at this time?
Yeah, I did have one quick question. When we look at the existing clock and replacing that, are we looking to make sure that we save that piece of history and somehow either keep it into a museum locally or that?
Yeah, I, I believe we can, we can work to save it somehow, but where it goes can be decided later. But yeah, I would say we can, we can save that. We can make, make that be known that we would like to have it. So.
Excellent.
Any other discussion? Hearing none then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the work being done at City Hall, Nick.
Yep, thank you.
We move on to Deputy Administrator, City Clerk, Ms. Supla.
Thank you, mayors and members of the council. I bring before you tonight Resolution twenty-three dash eleven dash zero six. This is accepting the grant award in support of the Pumpkins for the 2023 Trick, Treat, and Greet Event at Hibbing City Hall in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars from the Hibbing Foundation Family of Funds on behalf of the Owens-Pesavento Dr. Benjamin P. Owens Family Foundation. As you're all aware, and a lot of you were at our event, we had about seventeen hundred people come through, which was really amazing. we had about seventeen hundred people come through, which was really amazing. Um, I wanna thank, uh, not only the council, but the, um, Hibbing Foundation and the Dr. Benjamin P. Pesavento, or Owens and Pesavento Family Foundation for their generous gift. Um, we handed out these pumpkins. This is the third year we've done it, and they've helped us each year, which has been really a great help, um, for our community. We had, um, twenty businesses that handed out candy that night, or that day, and we co-sponsored this with The Chamber, which was always a great event. So, I'm just looking for, um, a motion to approve the resolution.
Hey, we're looking for motion to approve the resolutions. Read by Ms. Sepla. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on, uh, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Prusinski.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Um, this evening, I would offer Resolution twenty-three eleven oh seven, uh, authorizing the city of Hibbing to join the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. This is something that we have, uh, talked about a little bit in, in, um, our workshop. And just for a point of reference for our, our residents, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is a group that advocates for outstate cities, um, statewide. So, everybody from Hibbing all the way to Elbert Lee and everybody in between, um, except for the metropolitan area. So, it's a group. Um, lobbying is kind of their main thrust. Um, important to us because, like, LGA is always on the top of their list of, um, lobbying efforts. There are other things as well, uh, excuse me, that impact outstate cities. Um, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. Um, otherwise, a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three eleven oh seven.
Hearing what Mr. Prusinski had to say. Wishes of the council.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Greg, I, you know, I, I appreciate this coming forward because I feel, uh, the more people you can get in a partnership for seeking funding and representing our needs and, and especially in greater Minnesota. I think this is an important thing to do. And, you know, joining, being a part of the League of Minnesota Cities and, and all those work hard, uh, to bring funding to the city so that we can operate at the lowest price that we can from a tax levy point of view. So, that's all I have to say. Uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, I'm actually going to have two items from my office this evening. So, earlier during the consent agenda, we approved a special meeting on December thirteenth. My apologies, this is, um, just kind of developing today as, um, as the day went on. So, we have been in discussions with our, uh, um, Public Utility Commission. Uh, remember, they've got a long-term, uh, recapitalization plan for, um, water. They'll be pursuing some, uh, dollars from the bonding bill. Hopefully, we are successful during the twenty-two-four session. But also pursuing some PFA dollars, um, to recapitalize that system. We're hoping to be able to close on that loan by the end of the year. Um, December twentieth happens to be the last day that we can do that. So, what we plan to do, December sixth during our workshop, we'll have kind of our last, um, update to the city council, questions and answers. And there'll be some information in between there, but that'll be the last day to kind of have that live update. And then we'll have, um, an open meeting scheduled for twelve thirteen, uh, for the city council to consider and make a decision on that. My apology, my apologies, it's, it's a bit of a tight timeline. Um, but we will, we do wanna try to move it forward. Um, so I wanted to give you some context as far as that, that open meeting on the, on the sixteenth. So, any quick questions on that? Sorry, on the, on the thirteenth, December thirteenth. So, um, with that, seven B, um, we also have been working on our twenty-two-four budget. I'm gonna turn it over to Sheena here in a couple seconds. But, um, we've worked for months on it. Um, our budget efforts come to a crescendo on, um, the sixth of December with our truth and taxation meeting, talk about our budget, talk about our levy, impact to our taxpayers. The council can ask questions, as can the, the public and our residents. Um, and then we'll have it for consideration and, and, uh, final decision by our city council. So, I emailed out, and there's a hard copy in front of you, um, kind of a summary of where we're at right now. And Sheena, if you wanna walk us through that, and then we can answer questions.
Sure, yeah, like Greg said, you know, we've been working since June on this budget for twenty-two-four. Um, we've had a lot of things that we've had to increase, but we've also found lots of decreases. Um, the last time that I had came before the city council, uh, we were just under seven percent. Then we had some meetings with some of the department heads and found out some places that we had to add back in. So, we were back over eight percent. After meeting again with our, basically our budget internal team, where we try to go through and find places where we can make cuts overall in the city's budget, um, we were able to send you a summary sheet yesterday with an increase in the levy of five point nine seven percent over last year. Um, some of the big changes that we made in the last week or so that led to that change was, um, the interest income. We have been yielding between four and five percent on our fixed income securities. So, therefore, we were able to increase the budget, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which gave us about a percent and a half on that. And then, um, also, we have those equipment certificates. We passed that reimbursing resolution tonight. We've also had some other equipment that we had put in reimbursing resolutions that would be part of a larger issuance. So, the debt service levy had to increase, um, to five hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to cover that debt service coverage. But then I also decreased the OPEB debt service levy by two hundred and ten thousand. Um, we have about a third of that funded, that liability of about thirty million. We have about a third of, a third of that funded right now. And then in addition to that, even though we're reducing that levy to two hundred and ninety thousand to cover those benefits, um, we should yield about a quarter of a million dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest income next year with that four to five percent that we're yielding. And then that should still give us about five hundred thousand dollars or more in, in increase to that fund. So, so we were comfortable with reducing that levy down to the two hundred and ninety thousand mark. And that's what would get us to that five point nine seven percent increase over last year. Um, I know after we had that workshop meeting, we were trying to get it under, to under six percent. Um, so I guess I'm just seeing if the city council is comfortable with that for, um, going through with the final budget printing and getting prepared for the truth and taxation presentation on the sixth and approval.
Thank you for the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I, I applaud you for, I mean, that's kind of the number we were, we were talking about to be where we were last year. And with everything, uh, as departments, I think Public Works and all the different departments seem to be pleased with where we're going with our capital improvement plan, our housing, uh, capital improvement, uh, for buildings, facilities. So, that's what I gotta say. I, 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 I'm very pleased with where you've come.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I'd like to echo that, too. It's tough to make those cuts and find this money in certain spots, but you guys have done a really good job, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, with that, thank you, Greg, thank you, Sheena.
Mm-hmm.
We'll move on to bids and quotes. This is why we have the budget.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, our newest of the, one of the four John Deere graders that we own uh, needed a rear post assembly. Uh, we did, we already purchased that. They had one in stock. We purchased it, it's already on the grader. The cost for that rear post assembly is three thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. That does include shipping, and that's from McCoy Construction. And I'm asking for council approval.
Hey, we're looking for council approval for, uh, the rear assembly post. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Two, B, Jesse.
Uh, Mayor, Council, during the Rainy Road Bridge Project, which, uh, finished up November second, I believe, it was open for traffic and was painted. Uh, we ran into, um, some really thick blacktop over the culvert that was failing. It was approximately forty inches thick for about a hundred and forty feet in length. So, we did not know that was there. That was from years and years of this thing sinking, and we just kept patching it.
Yeah.
Um, so there was a change with that. And then we had a concrete abutments that needed to be removed that were on the outsides of the culvert, that were under the water surface that we did not know were there. Uh, the changes for this for Northern Construction, um, we agreed on a price of twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'm asking for council to approve that change order.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding change orders for the Rainy Road Bridge. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Jesse, is that common? Are we gonna find this in other places to have that much patuminous down on a problem spot?
Uh, no, Counselor, that is not common. Uh, this is kind of a rarity, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's the answer I was looking for.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C.
Uh, Mayor, Councilor, the Packer Blade, um, and wear kit for the Packmore Garbage Truck is wore out. Um, this is on the twenty-fourteen truck. This is one of the trucks that will be in service for at least another three years. Uh, we did order this. Uh, we wanted to make sure we got it because we don't have a backup for this truck. Um, the cost is fourteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents plus two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in tack, or shipping, for a total of seventeen thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. This is from Pyramid Equipment, and I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding a Packer Blade and wear kit from Packmore. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any other discussion? Jess, I, I see it says fourteen two thirteen on here, on the, uh...
Yes, then that was plus, plus freight.
Okay, very good.
Yep, so our freight was...
That was the freight to seventeen, very good.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. D.
Uh, Mayor, Councilor, one of our rapid rail garbage trucks, uh, the, the loader arm assembly is pretty much wore out. Um, every day we have to replace the bolts on it. The bolt holes are all reamed out. So, we need to order a new arm assembly for that garbage truck. Uh, the total for that arm assembly is forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-six cents plus freight. We got an estimate of, for freight of four thousand dollars. So, we're a little over forty-seven thousand dollars. This is from a queen. I'm asking for council approval so we can order this part, so we can get this changed on this garbage truck.
Very good, looking for support for, uh, arm assembly. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? You said three years on this, Jess? Is that...
For this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. E.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, as you recall, we, we talked about this at the working session. This is to purchase two twenty-two-four Kenworth T-eight-eighty dump trucks. Um, these trucks are bigger than our current trucks. We run dump trucks with ten-yard boxes. These two have twenty-two yard boxes. This'll make it much more efficient when we're doing snow removal.
Yes.
Um, we did take one of our dump trucks out of service. Uh, the frame pretty much was rotting out. So, this, one of these will replace that, and we'll add one more to our fleet, um, so we can have a, a better fleet of dump trucks. Um, the price for the trucks total is four hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This includes sales tax and freight. Um, we will have to pay title and license, and I'm asking for council to approve this purchase.
Hey, we're looking for, uh, approval for two Kenworths. Uh, and you said twenty-two yard. That's, that's good for snow removal. Uh, looking for support?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion?
Jesse, you mentioned tax. Why would we pay tax?
On the, we pay tax on the dump trucks.
Motor vehi- motor vehicle tax.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Ms. Koneman?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Once again, I come before you to request the approval for the purchase of a self-propelled floor scrubber in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents from Delco. This would replace the previously approved model at the September twentieth city council meeting. And the reason was the previous quote was for a model that is not comparable to what we have. It did not include the self-propel feature. And if you've ever used a floor scrubber, they are hundreds of pounds. So, it was not suitable for our needs. We reached out to the vendor, and they provided a more suitable model for us.
Very good. Hearing what Ms. Koneman had to say regarding, uh, uh, floor scrubber. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much.
Move on to, uh, Police Chief, Mr. Esti.
Uh, Mayor and Council, good evening. With, uh, our new fleet of squads on order, looking to move forward and purchase seeking equipment for them. Uh, the first one would be to approve the quote for upfitting five squad cars from enforcement lighting. Uh, the total for the cost of the equipment, the labor, and the shipping is eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, this will be purchased through state aid money. Uh, that'll be coming here in December.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Esti had to say. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any other discussion?
One question, Chief.
Yes.
The, uh, I noticed the Explorers were a lot cheaper to outfit. Is that it, because you're able to reuse some of the...
Yeah.
Stuff from the older Explorers?
Correct.
And the Durangos or the other ones?
Yep.
We don't have Durangos, apparently, obviously, right?
Apparently, we don't. That's where we're moving towards. So, now moving forward, we'll be, kinda get on that game plan.
That's what I figured. Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B.
Item B is to approve the purchase for four Motorola radiator, radiators, radios in the amount of twenty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. This is from DSC Communications, and they have the state bid for this.
Very good, Chief is looking for approval on purchase of Motorola radios. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Ballas. Port?
Support.
Support by Council Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C.
C is to approve the purchase of four Stalker radios, radars, in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is from Stalker Radar Incorporated, they are also the state bid. We're actually going to end up getting five. They had a promotion going where if we bought four, we got one free, so this worked out good.
Very good. So Chief is looking for four Stalker radars with a complimentary one. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Fossil.
Support.
Support by Council Hildebrand. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. D.
D is to approve the out-of-state travel for Captain Kengalo to attend Survival Defensive Tactics Course in Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin, June sixteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. This will give him the opportunity to be an instructor for our department.
Okay.
Our current instructor left our agency for other employment, so Captain Kengalo is going to step up and do this for us.
Very good. Hearing what Chief Esti requested for survival defense training? Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Ballas.
Support.
Support by Council Whitney. Any discussion?
Mayor? Yes. I just want to say that the training is really valuable. I'm really glad to see that he's going to go and do this for the force. It's, it's something that's much needed, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to Community Canop developer, Ms. Olivanti.
Excellent, Mayor, members of the council. My last request tonight is to approve additional funding for Miriam Caro as an independent contractor to finish the National Endowment for the Humanities Public Humanities Project Grant. So the, this is part of the twenty-twenty-three City Strategic Plan, high priority goal number one, completion of the Mindview Project. The National Endowment for the Humanities Public Humanities Project Grant is for the exhibition space inside the newly constructed Mindview Buildings. This project has been proven to be more involved than predicted. With the Science Museum of Minnesota at the helm, we have embarked on a robust and necessary process of stakeholder engagement and planning that includes stakeholder sessions, research, and weekly team meetings. The National Endowment for the Humanities Grant requires proven scholarship in forming our humanities themes. Hibbing and the Hall Rust Mahoning Mine provide a wealth of material, but the chosen themes must be culled and refined to fit into both the physical space and the requirements of the funder. The funding, the additional funding of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to continue the work on this grant for a total spend of seven thousand five hundred dollars would come from one oh one, forty-six, sixty-five hundred dash four thirty-one, which is part of my special projects line item. The team for this again is myself, City Services Director Nickarola, Erica Zubich from our Hibbing Historical Society, the Science Museum of Minnesota, and our grant writer, Miriam Caro, and then the additional community stakeholders that we've brought in.
Thank you. Hearing what Ms. Olivanti had to say regarding additional funding? Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we had, we'll go with Council Whitney. Support by Council Fossil. Any discussion? I have one question, timeframe. What are we looking at at this time, Betsy, as far as potential grants or completion?
Yes, so there is a draft of this grant that will go in in November at the end of this month. And then the National Endowment for the Humanities Group gives us some feedback in advance of the January of twenty-twenty-four submission. We've done a lot of work with our Science Museum of Minnesota staff to ask them, you know, is this the right time to apply, all that sort of thing? And they feel fairly confident that submitting in the January timeframe, we are, we will be both ready for that, and will allow us to get some good feedback. If this first round is denied, the second round would then be in August, but we would be better prepared. So at this time, this funding is to get that January twenty-twenty-four submission deadline.
Thank you so much for the information. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
We move on to license and permits. Approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Curling Club to hold their raffle on Tuesday, April ninth, twenty-twenty-four at the Hibbing Curling Club. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Ballas.
Support.
Support by Council Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Curling Club to hold their raffle for the bonds bill on Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four at the Hibbing Curling Club. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Whitney.
Support.
Support by Council Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the special event permit application of Lincoln PTO to hold their Deck the Halls event on Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three at the Lincoln Elementary School. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Fossil.
Support.
Support by Council Ballas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Four, approve the special event permit application of law enforcement torch run Special Olympics to hold the polar bear plunge on Saturday, March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four at Kerry Lake. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Whitney.
Support.
Support by Council Ballas. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Five, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Wire Parents Association to hold their raffle on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three at the Hibbing High School. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Council Fossil.
Support.
Support by Council Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Six, approve the raffle permit application request of the Veterans Community Thrift Store